Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of November 4, 2019. If we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chair Quigg. Vice Chair Quigg.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Chair Feng is absent and Chair Joe, I mean Commissioner Joe is absent.
Thank you. Next item, number three, is Agenda Review.
Yes, good evening Commissioners and members of the public. Staff would like to recommend that the agenda be reordered so that the next item be 7B, followed by 8A.
7A?
Yes, 7, the agenda would be 7B, followed by 7A, and then lastly, I mean, followed by 8A, and lastly would be 7A.
It has to be renewed here.
Yes.
For your week.
Right now? Okay. And through the chair, at this time, staff is recommending that item 8A be withdrawn at this time. It will return to the Planning Commission at a later date. Item 8A was an informational item only.
Thank you. So, we are extending 7B to another date, and we are extending 8A to another date. And the only item that I see is 7A, did I say it wrong? 7B would be extended, and 8A would be extended or moved to another date, and 7A would be held this evening.
Yes, this evening, we will hear item 7A, 354 Ludeman Lane, the design review permit. But 7B would be the first item we'd look at, and this item, staff is recommending it be continued to a later date, and is requesting the Commission vote on that.
Okay, thank you. Next item, well, why don't we just vote on those two items first, then?
We're on Gender Review, so why don't we just all agree that we're fine with that? That's a good plan.
Yeah, so public.
I just want, is 7B being postponed?
We're going to vote on that right now. Okay? So, we're going to go to public hearing, 7B, which staff is requesting that we move to another date. So, can I have a comment or a vote on 7B from the?
I move to continue 7B.
Okay, I guess, are there, we don't have a package prepared to review this 400 Chadborn Avenue, right?
Right.
And so, the purpose of moving it to a later date is?
I do have a comment, though.
Yes.
Since it was noticed, if someone is here to speak on that item, do, should we allow them to speak on that item?
Well, through the chair, I think that it would be best that they come back and speak, or come see staff earlier if they have concerns, but the item is being continued because the project, the plans are going to be revised to comply with setbacks. And so, their comments are, would be based on?
Be mute.
Would be muted because they're based on the previous plan. So, I think I recommend that we just?
We hold any comments at all?
Hold the comments at this point.
Okay. So, we have a motion to continue the public hearing on 7B, and we, do we have a second?
Yes, I have a second.
Okay, can we have your votes, please?
There you go.
Oops. Is there going on?
Okay, so we have moved to continue 400 Chadborn Avenue. Date specific will come forward later, and because of fact that it sounds like they need to readjust their plans, there would be really no need to make comments on it this evening. The next item is a new business item, and it was an informational presentation of the draft fee study report. And we have been requested to also continue that item.
That doesn't actually require a continuance, they're just postponing it. We don't need to do anything with that. Right, they'll just come back on another date.
Do we need vote on that?
No, we don't.
Okay. Being said, we're down to, well, no, now, Public Communications, please. And we do have one is, we have one from a Stephen Green, if you can get up and state your name, and state your information or comments on this item, that would be great.
My name's Stephen Green. Good evening, staff and members of the Planning Commission. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about something you hear all about, parking. I understand it's kind of a third rail, but it's also a crucial part of urban planning. As Millbrae grows and expands, we'll need to start making better choices about our land use. Millbrae, as we all know, is pretty much fully built out. The only way we'll be adding new residents smoothly, which will happen smoothly or not, is by densifying our land uses and housing. In my opinion, one thing Millbrae doesn't need more of is discreet surface parking lots. The value they generate is exclusively from property taxes, sorry, but depressed taxes because surface parking is not valued very highly by assessors. The Safeway complex, for example, pays less per unit area, with or without taking Prop 13 into account, than any single small business on Broadway. Parking spaces do not generate sales tax or income tax. They don't pay water bills. What's curious, then, is how our current zoning code and its mandatory parking minimums seem to encourage more, not less, of this unproductive land use. Even now, when Millbrae faces a looming budget and housing crisis, I'm going to cite a couple of examples. First, an example I'm well acquainted with, my apartment building on Magnolia. It was built in the middle of the last century and has six one-bedroom apartments on two floors. Each unit has one covered carport spot. Were it to be built today, without going through the long and expensive variance and design review process, it would require nine garage parking spaces. This would have vastly increased the cost to construct the building and may have made the unit layout impossible. Another example, my wife attends the local cycle gym, Rush Cycle, on Broadway. Were it to be on El Camino instead, the roughly 5,000-square-foot lot would require 17 parking spaces. Seventeen parking spaces, each laid out in our city requirements as nine feet by 24 feet, is already 3,762 square feet. But, of course, I've forgotten to take into account the required aisle width for two-way flow in this parking lot, bringing us to each stall being 36 feet long. So, now our 17 spaces take up 5,508 square feet. This is a larger parking lot than the business itself. I ate dinner the other night at Petit Camille, a nice, always-busy Vietnamese restaurant in El Camino. It has 72 seats in the dining room. Millbrae requires one parking space per 2.5 seats at a restaurant. That means Petit Camille would need 29 parking spaces. This parking lot would have to be a whopping 9,396 square feet. But they're grandfathered in, so it's fine, right? I'd point you to the example of several shuttered businesses along El Camino. Our zoning code requires that with a change of use, any new business must have at least 50% of the required parking, or they have to create all of it, out of thin air, in some cases. Have you ever thought about some of our numerous auto repair shops along El Camino becoming anything other than auto repair shops? Keep dreaming. The legacy ones don't have enough parking for any current uses. If they close, they're closed until someone with pockets deep enough to wait out the planning approval process decides to swoop in. I cite these examples specifically because I know Millbrae has done better in the past and can do better now. Think about every house east of Laurel. How many of them have the required two-garage spaces? How many of the busy restaurants in our downtown have parking at all, let alone parking square footage that dwarfs the establishment itself? Obviously, someone realized the contrast here, which is why we have the downtown improvement area zoning, which removes parking requirements for most uses and has relaxed requirements for residential uses. The question, then, is why, when we know that a zoning devoid of parking requirements works, do we still require often nonsensical amounts of parking elsewhere?
Can you wrap this up?
Despite proven examples.
Wrap it up, please.
Yes, ma'am. I've got a little off-track here, but my main point was that a lot of our parking requirements don't make sense for many reasons, but specifically because we have to be smart about using the land we have. I'm hoping that some of you will consider what I've said as Millbrae moves forward. Perhaps we can get the ball rolling to make smarter land use decisions. I'd love to go deeper. If anyone of you would like to read more about this, there's a lovely book at the library called The High Cost of Free Parking by the UCLA professor of urban planning named Donald Shoup. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We have nothing on the consent calendar, and so we're going to move on to public hearing for 354 Ludeman Lane. That's a design review permit to allow a first-floor renovation and a second-story addition to a single-family residence. Can we have the staff report, please?
I wanted to go over a little bit about the background of this project. Originally was proposed and heard at the May 6, 2019 Planning Commission hearing, and after review and discussion, the Commission on May 6, 2019 voted 5-0 to continue the application request for redesign of the project to meet the required second-floor setback and the floor-area ratio requirements. The applicant completed the planned redesign, and the project meets all required development standards for R1, and the project is before the Commission for approval this evening. The project is located in the Millwood Estates subdivision. It's located at 354 Ludeman Lane, between Queen Anne Court and Civil Court. The property is a 6,090-square-foot corner lot, single-family residential R1 zone residence with an existing two-car attached garage. The corner lot is rectangular in shape and has a rear easement of 705 square feet. The net site area is 5,994 square feet pursuant to Section 10.05.0200, the net site area. And this is the definition allows for elimination of 10% of the gross lot area, or 609 square feet from the overall lot size for parcel coverage purposes when an easement exists. This is a photograph of the existing single-story residence at the corner of Queen Anne and Ludeman Lane. The existing residence is a single-story. It includes a walkway to entry and front porch from Ludeman Lane and a two-car garage accessed from Queen Anne Court. The single-story home includes a two-car garage, the two-car driveway, front porch, living room, dining room, kitchen, three bedrooms, a laundry room, and a rear concrete patio, and two planner boxes located in the northeast corner of the rear yard. There's a 10-foot-wide by 70-foot easement, 705-square-foot easement located at the rear property line. The existing landscaping in the front and sides of the property includes one-to-four tall, foot-tall shrubs and flowers planted adjacent to the exterior of the house, with a grass lawn to the sidewalk. The existing roof slope is 412 with a hip-and-valley roof type. The proposed project is to partially demolish the existing single-story residence and construct a two-story residence. The first floor of the residence will contain a two-car garage with two-car driveway, new front-entry porch, entry hallway, stairway to a second floor, two bedrooms with closets, two bathrooms, one-half bathroom, a living room with fireplace, dining room, pantry, kitchen open to the family room, laundry room, and new patio located at the northeast corner of the backyard. The second floor consists of the stairway from the first floor, a hallway, and two bedrooms with closets and two bathrooms. The proposed roof slope is 412 with a hip-and-valley roof type. As part of the public noticing requirements, it was noticed 10 days prior to the Planning Commission hearing in the newspaper, and also posted within, all residents within a 300-foot radius of the project site, including the staking at the site. It was posted on the website, and six, or five adjacent neighbors, actually, there was six, six neighbors were consulted with adjacent consultation forms. Five of the adjacent neighbors support the project, and one was opposed. The person opposed lives at 16 Civil Court and had concerns about privacy. Those concerns were expressed at the previous Planning Commission meeting, and there was a discussion, discussing not only the privacy, he's located about two or three blocks away. The resident at 16 Civil Court did contact staff and express that he continued to have these concerns, but, and staff let him know that he could come to the Planning Commission tonight if he wished to speak on the project. This is the existing first-floor plan. And this is the proposed renovation of the first floor. So, the areas that are cross-hatched, and then the area here in red, are the main locations where the first-floor renovation would recur. And this is the second-story addition, located within this red box. As stated before, this project meets all development standards and the setback requirements for the second story. And those are, you know, 10 feet located here in the front, 10 feet on the sides, eight feet here due to the reduction factor, because the ground floor is actually further from the property line than is allowing for a reduction factor, and then 10 feet on the north elevation. And this is the rear of the, of the house. This is the proposed east elevation, and the proposed south elevation, proposed north elevation, proposed west elevation. And we have the landscaping, there's quite a bit of extensive landscaping that's going to be done as part of this project, with a variety of plants, a grassy lawn.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Variety of plants, adjacent, directly adjacent to the home, combined with a grass lawn. And then there's four large trees at the back of the property here. At this location, there are no trees proposed because this is the easement area. Overhead wires are located here. This is the proposed roof plan. This is an image of the material board, which is also here in the Planning Commission Hall, and we have it on the overhead here, indicating the hardy board shake siding with the foothills paint finish, a stone-thin veneer panel, which we'll use it as accents at the entry elevation and the garage door, and then example of the color types. This is the rendering of the project, matching the material board colors. So, just for the Commissioners, just for their understanding, the plans that they reviewed had a rendering that the colors didn't quite match the colors on the material board. So, what you have before you is the rendering with the correct colors, and this is what's being presented on the overhead also. So, this is the rendering with the exterior materials. This is locate, looking at the side, the Ludeman Lane side and the rear of the property. This is the view from the front entrance on Ludeman Lane. This is at the corner, looking at, to the left, Queen Anne, and then on the right, Ludeman Lane. And this is looking at the house from the Queen Anne side of the, of the street. This is located, looking back from the rear, at the rear of the house. So, staff reviewed this design review permit based on the required findings, and after the review, found that they met findings A through D, and that has determined that the proposed project meets all the required findings for approval. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the project and consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review permit to allow first-floor renovation and second-story addition to a single-family residence located in the single-family residential R1 zoning district at 354 Ludeman Lane, subject to the attached conditions of approval. I'm available to answer questions, and the applicant here is also available, if you have questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of staff? Not at this point. Thank you very much. Is the applicant available for the presentation? Yes.
Do you want, I'll put up the plans for you then.
The arrows, so you can just do these arrows. Up and down?
Yeah, up and down.
Or you can use this, actually, use the mouse.
Hello, I'm John Mafara, this is Paula Mafara. We live at 354 Ludeman Lane, and presenting our house renovation warrant.
Do you have, do you have anything to add, or something that?
No, I mean, after the, the last review, we, we took all the comments to heart, and we redesigned the stair location, condensed the, we relocated the stair, understanding that the exceptions wouldn't go through based on the previous stair location, so we relocated that, centralized the stair, and therefore allowed us to wrap the, the second floor around the stair, assisting us in meeting the setback requirements at the second floor, in addition to the square footage requirements, the FAR requirements.
We appreciate your redesign. Are there any, are there any comments at this point?
So, I remember when you presented the plans last time, really nice house, excited for your remodel.
Thank you.
And thank you for making the modifications to fit within the city guidelines and the city code. Looks like everything's within the code, so there's no, all the setbacks meet the standard requirements, and the heights, and the FAR, and the square footage, so that's great. I remember that there was just one gentleman at 16 Civil Court who had the concerns about the view for the trees facing west on the Green Hills property, or just having concerns about his, yeah. And we mentioned also that there was setback on the second story, so that allows more open space, and he has more view for that. But just in terms of the height, I noticed that it says in your drawings that there's a 26-foot, 6-inch height for the top, top of the roof to the first-floor finish elevation.
It'd be grade.
Okay, so that was my question about the first-floor finish elevation and how high that, because it doesn't specify. Want to make sure that it's not, or it's?
We readjusted those to grade, yeah.
Okay, okay, so then, that's great, so that answers.
There is a slope on the lot, it's very gradual, but at each, we took the, the most stringent part and adjusted the roof height accordingly.
So, of course, you want to have your slab slightly above grade so that it's not sitting in the dirt.
Yeah.
But the 26-foot, 6 inches then will be from, from grade, right?
Yes.
There's, yeah, they are, they are under, to the, to the rear part of the property where there's a greater slope, you have the, you have a higher vertical height as measured from grade, so they are just under the required 30, so they're like, like 29 feet, 6 inches. Because the way Millbrae calculates height, it's the finished exterior grade of the highest point. So, what you're, the number you're looking at maybe is probably a different corner.
Okay, so actually, from the 26-foot, 6 inches, it'll be from the southern end of the house where the slope is the highest, and then going down to the northern end where the slope is down, it'll actually be a bit higher than 26-foot, 6 from, from that grade.
Yes.
Okay, right. Have you given any other thoughts about the slope pitch of the roof, if there's any consideration for reducing that slope that might?
We're at, we're at, we're at 412 now. There may be some adjustment in the height depending on how we design the structure between the floors. But, you know, it could be less depending on my structural engineer designs. We plan on building a platform above the existing roof horizontal members, so it could, could reduce it a little bit, but the pitch is pretty low as it is. If I go any lower, there are some restrictions, I think, in that respect, but 412 is, is a pretty good pitch. It's pretty low.
Okay, so, it's good that you put some thought into that, and then there's the concerns from the neighbor about?
I spoke to the neighbor, you know, we're, we're poor, Joe, I mean, there's nothing, you know, he's come to my house, he, we spoke a few times, he understands that, you know, the project meets the requirements. He understands that, you know, the project meets the requirements. He expressed his concern, but we, you know, he understands that there... You know, we took into account his concerns just by, you know, setting the house back. I could have went on the rear elevation, on this elevation here, I could have extended the entire second floor to the rear, you know, parallel or in plane with the rear...
Remodel.
To the existing rear wall. But, you know, setting some of that back allows for some openness.
Right, we recognized that during the last meeting, too. So taking into consideration the height of the roof from grade and the considerations given about the setback from the northern side, and then also the height, if there's any other considerations given to the height of the roof. Thank you for addressing those issues for the neighbor and for the community.
Okay, anything else? The only comment I have, not necessarily for this project, but it is to staff. When we have these projects that go on for a length of time, for whatever reason, these neighbor consultant is dating back a year and a half, and I would recommend that after a certain amount of time, we have also run into people moving and houses selling, that we get updated neighbor consultation forms.
Yes.
It just seems like it would be a little bit more updated.
Yes, well, for this project, when the applicant was at the last Planning Commission to revise it to meet the setback standards, they did go out and renotice the adjacent neighbors, for they got new neighbor consultation forms based on the design that you're reviewing tonight.
But they weren't... Were they included in the pack?
Yes.
Okay, because here it says staff reviewed...
Yes, so whenever there's like a major revision or a...
It's not update the front.
Right.
Thank you. I didn't look at all of them, I just looked at the dates.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And it had nothing to do with yours, but I've noticed it on other projects also, and so I just wanted to clarify that we should always have updated when they're very extended periods of time.
I just want to say I appreciate staff's efforts. You know, we did take a longer period of time to resubmit. We were just going through a number of iterations...
Absolutely, I certainly understand.
...to relocate the stair and how to get that to work out within the setback, so... So we modified the first floor to get that to work.
Well, we appreciate. I think it's going to be a better project, anyway.
No, the first iteration was to take into account some design criteria, but no, I appreciate your comments, and I think it turned out to be a...
A good project.
A good project, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
What?
Do we have a motion? Wait a minute, is there anyone in the... I don't see anyone, but is there anyone in the audience that wishes to talk about the project?
I think it looks lovely. They're our neighbors.
Yeah, I figured you were all together, so... Okay, do we have a motion, then?
I move to approve the design review permit application to allow a first-floor renovation, second-story addition to a single-family residence in the single-family R1 zoning district, subject to the attached resolution and special conditions.
I'd like a second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, and can we have your votes, please? Okay, that passes. However, there is a 10-day appeal process. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice. Okay, where's the minutes? Here it is. Okay, well, this ended up being...
Ooh.
Do we have any staff updates?
No, at this time, there are no staff updates.
Any commission comments?
No.
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 No. There being none, any announcements? No? No? No. That being said, we have adjourned the meeting. What time?
7:35.
7:35.
We need to fix that clock.
We haven't changed the clock yet.
That was... Is that a record?
That's a record. That is a record, in my tenure, for sure.
So now we know who holds up the meetings.
Well, this would have been quite long.